Good morning and welcome to the May 24, 2023 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn, followed by the pledge. You will please stand up.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for the freedom you have given to us and for the price it was paid by Christ so we could live free. The cost of it all, the great sacrifice for freedom. We thank you for the brave men and women who have fought and continue to fight so courageously for our nation. We ask for your covering and blessing over them and their families. We pray that you would be gracious and circle them with your peace. We pray for your great favor and goodness to be evident in their lives. Please be with all who wear the uniform, who serve our communities and nations every single day. We ask that you provide your protection, that you will be their guiding force who leads the way, the rear guard who keeps them safe from behind. We ask that you would draw them to yourself amidst dangers they face. For you are the truth, you are the way, you are the light. Amen.
Our pledge to allegiance to the light and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got the minutes from the April 26, 2023 City Council Meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Wynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we are going to have an oath of office for Councilmember McKeller. We'll wait up here while you go down.
Thank you.
Okay, bud?
Thank you. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas... Oh, I'm sorry, let me repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas...
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas...
Aye, Shirley J. McKeller.
Aye, Shirley J. McKeller.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of City of Tyler City Council member...
Of the City of Tyler City Council member...
For District 3.
For District 3.
And of the State of Texas.
And of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this great state.
And of this great state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go down for some awards. We'll just meet... All right. I had too much coffee today. I'm raring to go. All right. We've got some awards today. These folks represent 120 years of service to the City of Tyler. The first one is James Freeman, Police Sergeant, 20 years of service. Stacy Lara, Recreation Program Supervisor, 20 years of service. I'm not going to get this last name right. Scott Marion. There you go. Police Officer, 20 years of service. All right. Lynn Thrash, Senior Telecommunicator, 20 years of service.
Yes, sir. Special Tyler Police Officer.
Is that it?
That's it.
Is that it?
Well, while you're looking at the others, go ahead and take a picture. Yes, Erin's got a way to go. So that one, and then you also take a picture with Kedrick, just having a little presentation on him.
Congratulations. Hi. All right. Erin.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am here today to present the Keep Tyler Beautiful Annual Report and Awards for 2022. Keep Tyler Beautiful has been a part of our community for 28 years and strives to make a difference by working to educate and encourage citizens to actively participate in improving the sustainability of the City of Tyler. Keep Tyler Beautiful is proud to be affiliated with B-City USA and supported at a national level by Keep America Beautiful and state level by Keep Texas Beautiful. Each year, the Keep Texas Beautiful Awards qualify affiliates based on their efforts in three main categories: Good Standing, Silver Star, and Gold Star affiliate. For our achievements in 2022, Keep Tyler Beautiful was awarded our 17th consecutive Gold Star status for our continuous efforts in beautification, litter reduction, and strong community participation in programs, events, and youth education. In addition, Keep Tyler Beautiful was also awarded our Sustained Excellence Award for 2021 through 2023 for consistently achieving a score of 90 or higher on our Governor's Community Achievement Award application. We have various programs that focus on each aspect of our mission. We've been an affiliate of B-City USA since 2019. We have a committee that meets regularly. They help plan events, programs, and outreach. Our Honeybee Observation Hive was a stop and stall and unveiled for our first annual B-Day in 2021. And we hosted our second annual B-Day in June of last year, where we had vendors, food trucks, workshops, and activities for children to learn about pollinators. We also celebrated National Pollinator Week with trivia and photo contests on Facebook. Our litter abatement programs are an effort to keep Tyler streets and open spaces litter-free. The Great Tyler Cleanup, which is partnered with the Great America... Keep America Beautiful, Great American Cleanup, and Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off, is our biggest event and continues to grow each year. In 2022, the first year since we were able to have this event at its fullest since COVID, we had 517 volunteers help clean out more than 2,200 pounds of litter in 18 locations. This was a 45.8% increase in participation from last year. The Adopt a Spot program, we had over 2,000 volunteers help remove nearly 10,000 pounds of litter from our streets and our open spaces. And we have three college campuses, 18 parks, and 37 streets adopted at the end of 2022. We also have a partnership with Andrews Diversified Industries to help assist with cleaning up Tyler roadways. In 2022, ADI helped remove 3,885 pounds of litter from 116 miles of roadway. Of course, we have the G-D in the Box program. It's we've been pairing local sponsors and artists to wrap traffic boxes since 2016. In 2022, we wrapped 12 new beautiful boxes and added to our collection for a total of 94 wrapped boxes. Park Service Day in 2022, we had 179 volunteers complete 19 projects at six park locations. This event helps focus on our smaller parks and completing beautifications there. We cleaned up litter limbs, mulching playgrounds, several painting projects. We built some raised flower beds at the senior center, added metal roofs to the Fun Forest Park softball field dugouts, and installed bat racks at Older Parks Edmore Field. Keep Tyler Beautiful also awarded the Volunteer of the Year Award to 92-year-old James Chuning for his longstanding service to Keep Tyler Beautiful and the state. Our Project Daffodil program, we sold 260 bags of daffodil bulbs. Along with the bulbs ordered for Tyler Parks, 13,750 daffodil bulbs were planted by park staff and residents in Tyler and the surrounding cities. Thanks to Urban Forestry and the Tyler Trees Committee, 78 trees were planted at Bergfeld Park and T.R. Griffith last year at Arbor Day, and 1,500 seedlings were handed out in February at the Seedling Giveaway. Last year, Keep Tyler Beautiful commissioned seven new murals, two of which were completed in 2023. The restaurants at Golden Road Park were designed and painted by artist Odessa Helm, and the retaining wall in front of the new Parks Admin Office was completed by artist Dotza Kit. Since 2019, Keep Tyler Beautiful has sponsored five restroom murals and four other public art murals, including the Loop 3023 mural, Waldorf Splash Pad, and Hillside Art Wall in 2019 and 2021. Our Tyler Against Graffiti program has a hotline and online form for residents to report graffiti across the City of Tyler. Keep Tyler Beautiful has a part-time technician who handles those graffiti reports and removals with an aim to remove graffiti in 72 hours of reporting. In 2022, we handled 107 graffiti cases in 47 different locations. In November 22, 2022, Keep Tyler Beautiful partnered with Solid Waste Department, Arctech Shredding, and Interstate Battery to host Tyler Recycles Day. This is a collaboration with the National Initiative of America Recycles Day, where staff, volunteers from Keep Tyler Beautiful Board, and our Youth Advisory Committee collected almost 6,000 pounds of recycling in four hours. We also created a recycled art contest in 2022 with an effort for artists of all ages to submit artwork created utilizing recycled materials. This is created to increase awareness of waste reduction by reusing items to make art rather than throwing them out. The inaugural event saw 20 submissions for the Be Recycling Superhero theme. We also have our Christmas Tree Recycling Program, where we recycle natural Christmas trees. People are allowed to drop them off at Golden Road Park and Fun Forest Park, and local fishermen and others can collect them to put into their ponds and other habitat for animal enrichment. And of course, our recycling center tours, we saw 126 people, mostly students, participate in these tours. Some highlights from 2022 include our Beauty and Business Award. We recognize local businesses for their efforts to beautify their property and keep it litter-free. Our 2022 winners were Fresh Web Brookshures, Tyler City Employee Credit Union, Zippy Jays #19 on Vine, and Collins Complete Family Care. Some other highlights, our Youth Advisory Committee is made up of high school and college-age students who help advise us on our programming and also participate. We have 11 active members currently. With our education and outreach, Keep Tyler Beautiful was invited to present in the 2022 Keep Texas Beautiful Conference in Austin. We spoke at two separate panels and presented on our Park Service Day event and our Youth Advisory Committee. Keep Tyler Beautiful also participated in 16 other outreach opportunities, including community events like the Library Summer Kickoff, Boo at the Zoo, Fall Fest, Tyler I C Job Fair, and other educational opportunities with organizations and schools like Lions Club and students from elementary through high school. Keep Tyler Beautiful was covered in the media 297 times in 2022 with a reach of 30.2 million people. All in all, volunteers from Keep Tyler Beautiful were able to complete more than 10,000 hours of volunteer time for more than $300,000 of value in volunteer time. We recognize that we cannot achieve everything that we do without the support of our city leaders, our committed board members, and our volunteers. We are extremely honored to be able to help make Tyler a more beautiful place and a place that people are proud to call home. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all do a lot.
We do a lot.
Well, and the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board seems to be one of the more popular boards to be on.
It's the best board.
But don't get on there unless you got to work.
Yeah, it's a hardworking board, yes, sir.
But thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's time.
Kedrick, top that.
Well, I thought I was going to get out of speaking since I'm... Okay, I'm not going to top that one, but...
You work hard, too.
So Mayor and Council, you have item A3 before you. And this is a request the City Council consider accepting the Certificate of Achievement Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for our fiscal year 2020-2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So basically, this is an impartial panel that goes through and they grade our financial report. They have different categories that they grade the report on. And really, what they're trying to determine is if the report demonstrates a full spirit of financial disclosure and clearly communicates our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read our financial report. I know that's exciting, reading a financial report. But it's pretty important because we have a lot of users like bond rating agencies, grant agencies, that actually do read our financial report. So this is a very prestigious award. It's something that we covet in our department. And I would just like to recognize, I've got two individuals here, Lanlan and Lauren Justice. Also, Deborah Vance is not here. Those three individuals, they work very hard on audit reports, coordinating their different sections. We have auditors that are literally in our office for a month, asking questions. We're having to pull information, have schedules ready for them. So it is a monumental task, and I've got a great staff, and they make it look easy. So having said that, we just request the City Council consider accepting the Certificate of Achievement Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the period ending September 30, 2021. And this is our 36th award.
Wow.
Wow. Pretty impressive. Just one after another. Thanks, Kedrick. Good job. Kyle, top that.
Okay. This... Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first item is a zone change from R1A, Single Family, to C1, Light Commercial. This is on the Northwest Loop. The applicant's requesting the change to use the property as a barber shop. It was previously the location of a church. The surrounding properties to the west and south are developed as single-family homes. To the north is developed with a nail salon. And then to the east across the loop is currently undeveloped. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to Neighborhood Commercial. If it was Zone C1, if it were to be zoned for office use, which also allows for the recommended use or proposed use, it would amend that to office. As you can see here, the property is currently developed with a church facility, and the applicant has purchased the property to use it as a barber shop. The... Of the notices we received, we received one in opposition to the far northwest, just under 0.4% of protest, concern about additional commercial activity into the neighborhood. In reviewing the requests, staff recommended, and the Planning Commission also recommended, to approve a zone change to office zoning, RPO, which would take into consideration the existing single-family homes built in that neighborhood. That zoning would also allow for the applicant's proposed use, and they are agreeable to that zoning. And so with a 5-0 vote, the Planning Commission recommended approval as RPO.
Any questions for Kyle?
This will be a new-built...
It'd be the current building.
Current, that current, okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Move to approve as Z1.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Well, I do have one discussion. Move to approve as it's written or move to approve as RPO?
RPO. Oh, well, whoever made the motion?
Yes, move to approve Z1 as an RPO.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This zone change is a request from R1B, Single Family Residential, to R2, Two-Family Residential. This is on West Fifth Street, just south of Glenwood and Tally Avenue. The request is to allow for the construction of duplex on the vacant lot. The surrounding zoning to the east, west, and south is R1B. Those are all developed as single-family homes. The adjacent property to the north is on PUR, is developed with a townhome development. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to Single Family and Single Family Attached from Single Family Medium Low Density. This, as you can see here, the applicant owns both of these lots. They plan to develop a duplex on the property to the west, the vacant lot. This request, we did have a similar request last year around this time that was not approved by the council by three to four vote. The... But this is a new request. They did ask, they did, you know, wait the required six months before requesting the same zone change. We did not receive any opposition or anything in favor of the request. The Planning Commission, by a 3-2 vote, recommended approval of the zone change.
That it?
That's it.
Can you say this was denied a year ago?
Correct.
About three to four. Is the applicant here? You know, it's kind of, I'll start the discussion. You know, I know how I voted last year. And, you know, when you start, there's, I don't think there's any duplexes on this street.
That's right.
So when you okay a duplex in an area where there are none, are you setting a precedent? Or is it open season for other neighborhoods that are going to say, well, you did it over on Fifth Street. Why can't we do it on Friday? Or why can't we do it anywhere else? So setting a precedent, I guess, concerns me of just creating an open season. But that's just me.
Kyle, the discussion of planning and zoning for it to be a 3-2 vote, was it similar concerns that all of a sudden we're introducing multifamily and residential?
Uh, it would be, yeah. The concern about with it being the kind of a mid-block introduction of two-family into a single-family and one-family district for, you know, neighborhood essentially. That was one of the concerns. The, though the applicant is not here, but they did note that there are other R2 properties that, as you can see here on the map, to the south and southeast. The R2 South next to the, next to Birdwell Elementary, the elementary school down there is, that is currently developed with a duplex, but all the other properties are all single-family.
Any other questions for Kyle?
There wasn't much opposition from the neighbors, was there?
There was no opposition.
None at all?
Fifth Street is a very busy street, so that's probably why I don't think that it's going to be a problem for me, since it is a busy street. So I'm so moved.
Did you just make a motion?
Yes. So moved for Z2.
To approve it?
To approve.
Got a motion? I'll second it.
I'll second it because I know that area, and it's, I guess, the applicant is not here, and then there's no opposition, so I don't, I don't see no reason why we should not approve it.
All right. We got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Z2, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye. Opposed?
Can we do that again? Can we do a roll call, Cassandra?
Councilmember Heaney?
Opposed.
Councilmember McGee?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeller?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Opposed.
And Mayor Warren?
Opposed. So, application is denied. Z3.
This is a request for a zone change from RPO Office to DBAC Downtown Business Arts and Culture District. This is for Path along South Chilton Avenue. As you can see here, the properties to the north and northwest and partially to the east are all on DBAC for downtown. And then a mixture of office and single-family to the south. The applicant owns the adjacent property to the north and east, and they are requesting this to, they plan to combine all the lots or all the lots into one property, and they want the same zoning for all, for the entire property. So the Future Land Use Guide supports this request, identifying it as mixed-use center. The, there was previously a home on the property there. That's what's been demolished is a parking lot for the Path Office. And the Planning Commission, by a 5-0 vote, recommended approval of the zone change.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z3.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Z4.
This is a request for a zone change from R1A, single-family, to R1B, single-family district. Uh, the difference between R1A and R1B are the, kind of the density, so R1A is a larger lot size requirement than R1B. Uh, this, this is over just south of Dixie Elementary. The surrounding properties are all zoned for residential use and are generally developed to the, to the west, and the schools to the north. Uh, this request would be consistent with the future land use guide, identifying it as single-family medium-low density. Uh, the applicant plans to develop this property with, uh, single-family homes or detached single-family homes, and so the R1B district will allow for, for that. Uh, of the notices sent, we received none in favor or in opposition, and the planning commission, by unanimous vote, recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is a lethargic crowd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Z5.
Didn't have as much coffee as you did.
Sure did, man.
Right. Z5.
This is a request for a special, special use permit to allow for the existing home to be used as a, also used as a one-chair beauty salon. Uh, this is located on Belair, Belair Drive in District 3. The, all the adjacent properties are zoned and developed with single-family homes. Uh, the, like I mentioned, the applicant is requesting to use the property partially as a one-chair beauty salon. The applicant will be required to accommodate the parking associated with the, the business and associated, also with the, the single-family home on the property. Uh, we did receive notices, one notice in opposition from a neighbor across the street. They were concerned about how it would affect parking in the neighborhood. Uh, like I mentioned, before they, before the applicant can begin their use, they will have to demonstrate that they, they have adequate off-street parking to, to accommodate that. Uh, the planning commission, by a five-zero vote, recommended approval of the SVP for one year.
Kyle, is this similar to what we did on Rice Road?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, sir?
Is this similar to what we did on Rice Road a couple months ago?
Uh, the, well, the Rice Road one, this is similar use. Uh, that one was approved for six months. Uh, the council does have the ability to pick, pick the timeframe for approval, but the, the planning commission recommended one year.
But if something happens in the council?
That's right. It can be, uh.
It can be revoked prior to a year.
Reassess or revoke if there is an issue.
What's the cross street? You said this is D3, right? Can I see again?
Yes, it's Belvaneer and Belair.
Could you put the picture back again?
Uh, this one?
The other one. There was another one? Okay.
This is, uh, the North Parkdale Avenue, or Parkdale area, Garden Valley area.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Any other, you got any questions?
No, I, I was just trying to see exactly where that's located.
All right, what's the desire?
I move to approve, Z4.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle.
Mayor Council, you have items, before you, request the city council consider reviewing, or request the city council review and consider accepting the revenue expenditure report for the period ending March 31st, 2023. The financial statements in your packet represent about 70% of our appropriations. The other 30% are utility debt service fund, capital projects funds, but these are normally the ones that we cover with you all, and if you want more detail on the others, I'm always glad to share that with you. Uh, we'll just kind of hit some of the highlights on these funds. We'll start out with the general fund. Uh, we're expecting revenues to be a little over $2 million greater than budget, largely due to sales tax. Uh, we're up about seven and a half percent year-to-date on sales tax, and I think the past month, we were up about 3%. So, so everything's still looking pretty good on, on sales tax. Expenditures, we're expecting those to be about 2.8% less than budget. Utilities fund, uh, we're looking at revenues to be greater than budget by about $900,000. Uh, there's several accounts that, that is a reason for that. Septic dumping, dumping interest, uh, interest revenues, interest rates are up on our investments. Also, we're kind of expecting on water and sewer sales to be a little bit better than we anticipate, but we'll really know the real story when the summer gets here, and we'll see how the weather turns out. Also, we're expecting expenditures to be about $2 million less than budget in utilities Solid waste fund, we're expecting revenues to be about $111,000 greater than budget, and expecting expenditures to be about $4,000 greater than budget. Airport fund, revenues are expected to be about almost $25,000 less than budget, and we're expecting expenditures to be about $148,000 less than budget. Development services fund, um, we're expecting revenues to be about $184,000 less than budget, uh, or greater than budget, I'm sorry, and we're expecting expenditures to be about $161,000 less than budget. Hot fund, uh, continue to do well there. We're expecting $220,000 greater than budget and $134,000 less than budget on expenditures. Employee benefits fund, we're expecting revenues to be about 2.8, 2.9% greater than budget, uh, largely due to stop-loss reimbursements. Also, we're expecting expenses to be about 1.8 million greater than budget. So this concludes my report. We're requesting that you vote to accept this revenue expenditure report for the period ending March 31st, 2023.
So, Kedrick, what makes the, on the employee benefit fund, the 1.8 million more than budget?
We've just got some large claims, uh, that we're continuing to deal with as, as I, as we, in previous reports, talked about some of the large claims that we had last fiscal year. Those claims are continuing into the new year, and there's been a few new ones to come on as well, so.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments for Kedrick?
Move to approve M1.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Haney. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Good morning.
So, my name is Jacob Yanker. I am a project engineer for Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm here to present items M2 and M3. Um, so starting off with item M2, the FM 756 Utility Relocates Engineering Agreement. So just a little bit of background on the roadway project that TechStop is, is planning to do. So they're currently planning and in the design process to widen FM 756, also known as Paluxi, from a two-lane, non-divided farm-to-market road to a four-lane divided roadway with a flush center median. This project spans from Jeff Davis to FM 346, which is around four miles long, and it will include two new bridge structures and widen Bridge, Loop 49, along with 11 culvert crossings. Uh, so TechStop is currently at the 60%, 60% design, and they have alignments firm enough now to begin the utility relocation process. Uh, they have been acquiring right-of-way since last fall, and that is still an ongoing process right now. So in the utility relocate process, the existing infrastructure will be both abandoned in place and removed, uh, with new material to the edge of the new TechStop right-of-way. Uh, so the scope of this project is broken into two areas. There's a northern section that's seen here that's between Jeff Davis and, or this, this right around Jeff Davis, and then the southern portion seen here is from Cumberland, Loop 49. Uh, the city serves relatively small number of residents and businesses within these areas of water and sewer, and we'll be reconnecting once the relocates are done. Uh, so between both the north and south areas, there are approximately 93, or preliminary estimates are 9,300 feet of water line to relocate, uh, just over 2,000 feet of sewer line to relocate, and then we'll be replacing 17 manholes. Um, so these quantities are, are estimated to cost around $2.7 million worth of construction costs, and we're anticipating to begin construction in April of 2024. Um, so with that, ask if there are any questions?
Any questions for Jacob?
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
Uh, so I'll just back up real quick to read the, the recommendation. I think I might have got a little bit ahead of myself. Uh, so I'd, I'd like to request that we enter into an engineering agreement with eligible engineering for the 756 utility relocate's in the amount of $365,000, with a, adopt a resolution to reserve the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Okay, sorry. If you got it, yes, just keep on going.
So item M3 is the Shiloh Road Elevated Storage Tank Site Improvements Construction Contract. So the Shiloh Elevated Storage Tank was removed from service in 2019 following a TCEQ inspection, and the site improvements project is the second and final project to complete the work needed to put the Shiloh tank back in service. Uh, the first project for the exterior and interior tank rehab was approved by council on April 12th, and the site improvements project will be replacing the booster pump station, replacing over 500 feet of monsite piping, and we'll install a tank mixer and upgrade electrical and drainage systems. So on May 9th, bids were publicly, publicly opened, and we received three bids in total. Uh, our engineers estimate was right around a million dollars, and the low bidder was McGinnis Brothers Construction coming in at $960,000. Upon council approval, we will move forward with both of these projects this summer for the elevated storage tank. The tank rehab is anticipated to be completed in December 2023, and the site improvements will be completed in April 2024. Uh, when both these projects are completed, we'll be establishing a new pressure plant in late spring of, of 2024. Uh, so with that, I'd like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with McGinnis Brothers Construction in the amount of $960,000 for the Shiloh Road Elevated Storage Tank Site Improvements and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures of proceeds of future debt.
So Jacob, have we used McGinnis before?
Um, so they are on our approved contractors list, uh, and the history that I have learned, I am not aware of a project that the city has done with them. Our consultants, KSA, have recently done work in Longview and Palestine on water treatment and water distribution with them, and that was considered in the recommendation.
Any other questions for Jacob?
Are there other tanks in the city that we're going to rehab later?
Uh, yes, we have, we have a, a list of tanks in our CIP that's scheduled out until the next 10 years. I believe the next one in 2027 is Copeland, but that, that list changes based on the condition of the tanks.
Sure.
Move to approve M3.
Second.
Got a motion by Nguyen, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
M4. Kate.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Morning.
All right, so I consent decree. Um, agenda item M4 is an additional engineering services agreement with KSA for their Group Five remedial measures project. Um, for the Group Five, uh, yeah, that engineering services agreement, um, was accepted July 14th of 2022. Um, it included a lot of work on manholes, gravity main remediation and point repairs. There are four design packages that came out of the Group Five remediation project. Um, there was a manhole package, which is currently in progress, cured-in-place pipe, CIPP, which is in progress, a pipe bursting project, which is in progress, um, as far as construction, and then the traditional gravity main project, which is currently bidding, and bids will be open next Tuesday. So the reason KSA has come back to us with an additional, uh, services scope is due to a lot of these gravity mains that were looked at, instead of just point repairs or some type of regular repair that needed to be done, a reroute made more sense. Rerouting the pipeline, uh, or the sewer line out of people's backyards or, or what have you. So that includes a lot of additional work, uh, as opposed to just a typical point repair. So, um, that includes surveying right-of-way and property owner coordination and the construction based services for that. So they've come back requesting $630,500, uh, for the engineering fee. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an additional services engineering agreement with KSA for the Group Five consent decree remedial measures designed in the amount of $630,500, $630,500, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures for proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Kate, has this changed the timeline in any way for this project? Everything's still on track to be completed in time?
Everything's still on track, yes.
And by doing this and rerouting of future maintenance would be easier, we'd have to have less coordination with residents.
And some of this is due to the fact that it sometimes can be difficult to work with some property owners, and they don't want to give us easements, so reroute sometimes is the best way to go.
Move to approve M4.
Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M5.
Okay, so M5, um, is our sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV program. Uh, and we're currently in year two of a three-year, uh, contract with Vortex through buy board. Um, that was awarded February 8th of 2021. We're, we're in year seven, which is group seven of our cleaning and CCTV inspection for the consent decree. As you remember, these, uh, the city was divided into different basins, and each basin was prioritized according to the size of the lines and criticality. Uh, this revision to this contract really is just including, uh, some dig works pricing, meaning one of the main issues we've had during, uh, cleaning and inspection has been access. So access getting to either a manhole, opening a manhole, a manhole might have been paved over, so this gives us the flexibility to ask, to have Vortex go in and do these repairs. And this is a buy board contract that they've already provided pricing for. So, um, there, this won't be taking any work from any local contractors as, as far as, uh, or any of the contractors that we come and have working on our lines. Um, we, we have done that dig work as a separate contract in the past, but that really resulted in inefficiencies. Uh, we would have to stop work, get the other contractor in, so this makes more sense. So we would be continuing this contract with Vortex Services. The contract amount is $3,233,391.57. So I am requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute the second year of a Plan Three Year indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, IDIQ contract of cleaning and closed-circuit television, recording of wastewater, sanitary sewer lines group six through eight, TSAB buy board contract number 635-21 with Vortex Services LLC for $3,233,391.51. Fifty-seven cents.
So how many basins are left to do this on?
Um, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, I believe, four basins left, and we pulled one of those basins out, which I'll talk about in M6, but we're getting there. We're almost done.
But we haven't done within the next three years?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve.
All right. Got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so to speed things along with, um, with this cleaning and inspection, what we decided to do because we were having issues with, uh, uh, access was pull one of the basins out that we had originally in that contract and bid it out separately, so we could have two cleaning and C C T V contractors working on it at the same time, just to accelerate our schedule. So, um, we took basin twenty out of the, uh, original contract, um, and that's about two-hundred-and-seventy-seven, uh, thousand linear feet of sanitary sewer line, uh, that we bid out, and we have an add alternate in this, uh, bid for an additional two-hundred-thousand linear feet if they get ahead of schedule and they can help us out. Um, so, but the majority of this work is in basin twenty, which is, uh, located on the southeast, the very southeast tip of the city purple area. So, two bids were received. Uh, we had Pro Pipe, uh, was the, uh, low response bidder at one-million-three-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. So, I request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the group seven cleaning and closed-circuit television C C T V reporting of wastewater lines basins twenty, basin twenty, bid number twenty-three dash oh forty-three with Pro Pipe Inc. for one-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions for Kate?
Kate, have we worked with Pro Pipe?
Um, we've, uh, I, we have not worked with them before, but they come recommended.
By K S A? By K S A?
Move to approve M six.
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Heather?
Morning.
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
This is a request that the city council consider reappointment of the chairman and two members of the City of Tyler Tax in permanent reinvestment zone number one. And this is, this board consists of eight members with members serving staggered to your terms, and the city of council makes six appointments to this board of directors. As the administrator, the Tyler Economic Development Council requests that the city council reappoint Billy Hibs and Fred Carl and to reappoint Dean Cagle as a member, as well as reappoint Dean Cagle as the chairman of this board. The new membership for all members will expire in twenty twenty-five, and the chairmanship expires in twenty twenty-four. So with that, it is recommended to approve the reappointments as presented.
Any questions for Heather?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M eight.
This is a request that the city council consider adoption of a resolution nominating Tyler Regional Hospital, U T Health Tyler, for award of a state of Texas enterprise zone project designation and a job retention benefit under the enterprise zone program. The Tyler Regional Hospital is a subsidiary of the Arden Health Services. It, Arden is privately owned, uh, it is a privately owned healthcare services company. Arden operates the U T Health Tyler Hospital in partnership with the University of Texas System. Tyler Regional is a full-service five-hundred-and-two-bed facility. The Tyler Regional operations include two other legal entities that will be in addition to these participating entities to this application, and that includes the rehabilitation hospital as well as the specialty hospital, and this address is in addition to the primary site, which, uh, operates at seven-oh-one Olympic Plaza. So, we pretty much consider them a cohesive, uh, uh, site, but it's just divided by that one. Uh, let's see, Arden plans to invest five million, uh, to upgrade the facility and replace medical equipment. These planned investments will allow Tyler Regional to continue to provide quality care to those in need and offer a wide range of services to the Tyler community. Arden currently has two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty employees, and then of the two-hundred, uh, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty employees, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-two are full-time, and during the designation, Tyler Regional expects to create at least ten new jobs in addition to maintaining the existing level of employment at their respective facilities and, uh, retain all full-time jobs for benefit under this enterprise zone designation. So with that, the, uh, T D C is, is asking that we recommend to the city council approval of this resolution to designate the enterprise zone.
Move to approve M eight.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Got a motion by McGee, second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and council, um, so, few different items of note. Um, the first of which, though, was something of, that was very kind of important to us. In fact, uh, we're lucky to have her with us as far as our community resource officer, Bianca Smidley, today to kind of, as we kind of brag on her and just the work that she has done. On Friday, May twelfth, uh, the police department had the opportunity to hold their first community event at the Glass Recreation Center, just as they have done with Church of Community and other outreach events. There was a, is an absence that was noted of, especially with our Hispanic community, the outreach towards them and being able to have good conversations with our police department, public safety, um, and that community. And so, there was a great turnout that they had at this first, uh, community event, and it was clearly apparent that we will need to find a larger venue in the future. Community Resource Officer Bianca Smidley took the initiative to set this program up and bring together officers, organizations, and citizens. The meeting was led by detector, Detective Edgar Zapata, and, and many of our Hispanic officers introduced themselves and spoke about their assignments within the department. Meeting was conducted almost entirely in Spanish and provided a new outreach opportunity for our department. Look forward to seeing the growth of this program for everyone attending and involved and speaking during the event. We want to say thank you, and so we were very grateful for, as far as Officer Smidley and what she has done, um, as well as just the entire police department and their outreach to that, to our Hispanic community. Many of y'all are, as far as graduates of Leadership Tyler, and so, last week, uh, we actually celebrated, uh, the graduation of Leadership Tyler Class of Thirty-Six, of which we have our own Regina Moss, um, and I'm pointing back there thinking that she might be there, because she's probably not. Um, and then also, uh, Paul Finn, uh, our fire marshal, and so we're very excited and proud of them, uh, for their achievement on that. Uh, and also, a major congratulations to Mayor Warren and our communications team. During that Leadership Tyler event, uh, that was just the precursor for the state of the city. Um, and so we had one of the best state of the cities, uh, that, you know, memory that any of us can, can think about. Uh, we're very proud to make, uh, for what he did, his communications team, uh, for making sure that that, uh, just went without a hitch, uh, and was incredible, uh, for you as the council, for your representation there, and just kind of the support that you give. And so, the state of the city really did turn out incredible, and we are very appreciative, um, again, of the mayor and our communications team for making the city look great. And then also, um, she's not here, but if you get a chance, make sure, let me see, Amber Patrick, uh, this is her last council meeting day. Uh, for the commu-, for the people in the audience, uh, minus staff, they know. Um, but, um, you know, there's, Amber sits back there, um, as our, my executive assistant, and she makes sure that, um, that this meeting, a lot of parts of this meeting run without a hitch, from the agenda preparation to the, um, the fact that getting the information to the council, uh, to the waters you have in front of you. Uh, she has just been essential in the past year and a half of her work on that. Uh, we have been very proud to have her, and she is now moving, uh, with her family, uh, to the greater Austin area. Uh, she'll regret that later. Um, but, until she moves back here, uh, we are, this is her last council meeting that, uh, she'll have been able to have her hands in, and we're, like I said, we're very appreciative of the work she's done. If you get a chance to say thank you, uh, please do.
So Ed, are you saying that future council meetings are not going to run as smoothly?
You may need to bring your own water. Uh, yeah, probably is. Uh, they won't be running soon.
All right, and I do want to wish Benny happy birthday and Medicare birthday, I believe.
Oh, wow. No, you didn't.
And, and I will say this, Benny told me yesterday that even though he's Medicare age, he can still do a one-armed push-up. I asked him to do it, and he would not do it yesterday. He wanted me to pay him money, and I don't do that. Any other comments for the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I would, I would like to add to the, um, city manager's report to thank our fire chief for sending out his, uh, staff to teach a group of us CPR on last night, and we actually have Mike Nichols and Dr. Nancy Nichols in, in, uh, with us today because they were part of the ones who were taught CPR, how important it is, so I want to thank the fire chief for sending his student in at last night to train us up.
Well, that is incredible, you know, he is, he did, he did the same for us recently as far as, uh, myself and some of our executive team members, and, yeah, just...
Was about thirty-five of us last night.
Yes, and, and so, yeah, did you learn the full compression technique?
Well, I already know, I'm supposed to already know, right?
Oh, that's right. Yes, exactly.
But it was great, so I want to thank him publicly.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, we are adjourned.